Welcome to the amenities committee meeting on Tuesday, the 5th of December. Very pleased to see so many of you. Thank you for coming. We'll kick off with the agenda as usual. Nick's here to do the town team managers' report. And then by all means, you are welcome to stay, but you don't have to. But it's a good overview of the work that Nick and the team do. And so I'll just rattle through the first few items, 492. Does anybody have any declarations of any disclosable pecuniary interests? None? Are there any apologies for absence, please?
There are. Two, Paula Barretta and Stuart Terry.
Lovely, thank you. Minutes from our meeting held on the 7th of November. They've been received by full council. Is the committee content that I sign them as an accurate record? Those of you that are committee members? Yeah, thank you very much. 495, without further ado, I think Nick's report was circulated in advance. But what we normally do is get Nick to talk us through it and highlight any particular aspects that he wants us to be aware of. So, thank you very much, Nick.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the town team during the month of November have been carrying out a range of tasks around the town. This has included the maintenance, cleaning and checking of the town street furniture, play parks, public toilets, allotment sites, open spaces and the cemetery, as well as buildings and assets owned by the town council. We've also been working alongside and reporting issues under Breckland Council, Norfolk County Council and Highways Ownerships to improve the town. This has included bridge structures and underpasses. So we've received more verbal complaints from the public regarding the underpasses along Hailing Path and Cannon's Walk. Once again, we have contacted Norfolk Highways to stress to them that these assets are their responsibility and that we have an obligation of maintaining them. The town team recently visited the minister gate, Lee Close and Croxton Road underpasses to work alongside Breckland Council and Serco in keeping these clean and free from graffiti. Again, these structures are also owned by Norfolk County Council. And it's been stressed again to them that they need to show some support to both councils and to work alongside us going forward with their assets. A response was received, which stated again that no further action will be taken on Norfolk County Council Highways Park due to no funding scope until their 2024 budget, and this will then be reassessed. Moving on, so again, further reports were again made to Norfolk Highways in regard to other issues surrounding some of their owned assets around Thetford. This included street lighting. Amy from Norfolk Street Line has recently been contacted in regards to street lights not working in and around the town centre, primarily King Street. They've confirmed that all units will be looked at that have been reported and they will be checked and repaired or replaced where needed. Nuns Bridges, there's a damaged bridge structure at Nuns Bridges currently. This has been again reported and I've again received correspondence from Norfolk again today saying that no further action will be taken as they don't see there's any issues currently with the structure. Vegetation at the bus station interchange has now all been cut back after much correspondence. This has made a safe, clear route alongside the highways and bus interchange. We've also been informed that upgrades are also due to take place at the bus interchange with new digital electric bus information points at each of the bus shelters. This will put work as part of an upgrade to the site that will be taking place in due course to replace the old information point that's currently failed. The new units are estimated to give a real time information of the next available bus at each particular bus shelter point for the public. Correspondence with Breckland. So we've contacted Breckland to seek clarification on individual prices of the potential amenity land that they've proposed to sell over or transfer to us if agreed by full council. We're now awaiting further communications following their survey, looking at the sites. Contact will be made in due course with a final proposal. If we decide to proceed with the purchasing of the land, these will have an open space and community element attached. This will mean that the value of each piece of land should return as a nil near value to be transferred across. There's a bit of an outline of the areas that have been proposed to be transferred over potentially. We also asked our grounds maintenance contractor to price up the costings for the areas should the town council agree to take these over. And there's an outline of all the different costings for each area now supplied by the contractor. Street furniture, so the town team have continued to clean and wash and remove graffiti. The town's street furniture, play parks and notice boards as part of the regular weekly cleaning schedules. They've also been working alongside and working on making a list of the litter bins and dog waste bins that are needing replacement or repairs, including Breckland's and Norfolk's. And these will be scheduled in between the town, council and Breckland in identifying the ones under different ownerships and responsibilities. We continue to again work alongside Serco and Breckland and Norfolk to try and encourage them to carry out maintenance needed to their assets within the public areas and to improve areas. The team have also been looking at grit bins. There's a lot of grit bins installed around the town and they've been sort of making a list of the ones that need replacing and upgrading. And we're sort of gradually working through those. Grazing signs, so we've got all the grazing signage in place now in hopes ahead of next season, getting the grazing in place for all our areas. So we've got some new livestock signage, trying to illiterate to the public that dogs must be kept on a lead at all times within these areas. And also we're trying to encourage them to clean up after their dogs' waste as well. Town floral displays, so the town team have also been working in the autumn and winter floral displays. A mixture of winter pansies, violas and primroses have now all been planted around the town to give us area splash of winter colour. SAM2, SAM2 speed machine has recently been installed on Castle Lane for a period of four weeks. The data has now been retrieved and this has now been passed on through to both Norfolk and Highways and Norfolk Police to be reviewed. The SAM2 has now been relocated to Cloverfields where it was originally placed and this will now serve again a four week period in this location. The machine has recently been reset and is set to the correct speed limit after the area following a technical error. Open spaces and grazing, so over the last month, there have been several site meetings and correspondence sent to more local graziers. This is to see if we can get all three sites needing grazing potentially secured for the grazing season in 24. At present, one grazer has contacted us and shown very keen interest. He is currently producing a document to present to the amenities committee of how he could look at helping the town council, not only in providing grazing for the sites, but also by potentially supporting town events and in promoting our open spaces further through his livestock and grazing knowledge. This being through assisting in delivering educational guided walks to schools and local groups, as well as by supporting the officers in writing bids potentially to secure funding for individual sites further and to help improve assets. Castle mound and ramparts. So we've had a number of contractors visit the castle mound to view the major works now needed for the cutting, removing and treating of the self set trees that have taken hold on the site. This work is vital to the ancient schedule monument. We are still in discussions with Historic England to find an acceptable method for this to proceed. Once an acceptable method has been agreed and carried out, the second part of the works will take place and Historic England have already approved a small robotic flail to cut and remove the brambles and vegetation, which the livestock would not graze. So it is ready for the grazing to begin. This work is essential for the site's future. The football field side of the common will be cut soon mechanically. Again, this has failed to be grazed through dog attacks. So that's something that we're going to be carrying out shortly. Sir Frederick's Wood, so a tree safety inspection survey was recently carried out to all of our open spaces where trees are located. The survey has reported that residents at Sir Frederick's Wood are experiencing issues at the back of their properties due to the trees. We're exploring options as how do we proceed in supporting the residents? We're trying to provide an acceptable proposal for the method recommended work alongside the annual tree maintenance, which is needed because of the trees around the boundary. The proposal would see each property sent a letter asking them to book an appointment for our tree surgeon to attend site and meet with each resident. This proposal of works would see all boundary trees trimmed upwards at at least four metres in height with any overhanging branches and limbs overhanging any garden removed and our contractor will meet with each resident. This has now taken place and all the houses around the woodland have received letters. And we've now booked a date in for the 18th of December where our tree contractor will meet with the local residents and look at all the work that needs to be taken place to put together a quote of works for us to look at and consider. Other reported works that were booked in for repairs with our specialist contract has included the St Peter's Church roof, which is now being near completed. And this is making it watertight for the winter. We've also got some vandalised railings and brickwork at Gendals Bridge and that's due to be repaired when the parts come in. Conservation volunteers, so the volunteers have been busy working alongside David, our town team member throughout the month of November. The sites including Barnham Common have seen several areas of removal of gorse as part of the management plans for the sites. Litter picking and checking of the sites was also carried out to report back any concerns for the areas following their visits. The group have also continued to check the fences, gates, as well as litter pick sites, including Barnham Common, Ford Meadow, Castle Park, Sir Frederick's Wood and Main Street Woodland. Some pictures there of the team doing a great work for the local community. So that's a good thanks to our local conservation group. As part of the conservation group's dynamics, we're covering a multi range of tasks to maintain our open spaces. We've also recently been liaising with other conservation volunteer organisations to arrange some site visits and skills courses to different local conservation sites. This will not only allow the volunteers a chance to learn a variety of new skills and techniques of working, but this will also allow them to gain and build their knowledge. This in turn will bring some fresh new ideas and knowledge for us to adapt to our sites going forward. Dates have now been confirmed for the group to visit Thompson Common and Little Loos Project in 2024. We're also looking at another wild about Thetford Town event, which would be held following the success of this year's event that took place. Next year, we also hope to organise some guided walks to help promote our open spaces further. And David from the town team has recently completed a guided walks course alongside the BFAR project. We've also been working alongside the BFAR project in promoting our conservation group, which has seen the generous funding of an identification flag and high vis vests with the group to use when working on our open spaces and to highlight the great work that they do. This should be with us shortly and these have now all been ordered and confirmed. November's attendance was lower than normal, but this may be due to the adverse weather. The volunteers' hours equated to 35 hours and we thank the conservation group for all their effort and hard work.
Thank you very much for all that, Nick. And I know you and the team have also been helping a lot with Christmas lights and all of that sort of stuff the last few weeks particularly. So quite a lot going on in November. Does anyone have any questions, please, on Nick's report?
Well, a couple of statements. Firstly, the grazer stuff that we've got, that's the most positive thing I've heard about that since we've ever talked about it. That's really good. The SAM2, have we ever had any data feedback as we've asked?
We keep passing it across to Highways and the police. Highways have come back and acknowledged that they are looking at some of the data we are sending across. They are acknowledging they are looking at it. So potentially hopefully going forward.
They're looking at it. I was hoping they might share some of that with us. It would help us position the camera, that's all thinking. Okay, thanks.
Were we on location six, I think?
We are, location six, yeah.
You know, I suspected we'd put it up and then put it back in the cupboard for a while, but actually the team have been, you know, literally comes down and goes immediately up to somewhere else, which I think is brilliant, you know, so.
Yeah.
I've got Mike first, then David.
Thank you. I won't have a major rant, but I'm disappointed by the continuing negativity of Norfolk County Council not wanting to look after their own property. And to say that they haven't got any money is a bit weird. I mean, are they telling us that they didn't expect to have to look after their property in 2020, 23? And it would come as a surprise to us if they bothered to look after in 2023, 24? Is that really what they're saying? Is that what they want to live across as their attitude of? The second of the two is almost a more worrying that they're ignoring the decline in the quality of the bridge work on Nuns Bridges. That is a vital crossing for Thetford. We are very sure to river crossings on Thetford. We close that one, it sounds like the whole town, as you will know from recent experience. And we really do need to make sure that that bridge is maintained in a sort of condition where the slightest touch from another vehicle or maybe some heavy weather could bring that wall down and meant that the bridge has to be closed. I wonder whether there's anything we think we can do further as a council to ask Norfolk to bring forward its repairs to the two items that were particularly referred to.
Yep. I had a conversation with Nick beforehand and I think we've spoken about amenities. We kind of go through phases of different councils or different organisations and their performance. And not so many years ago, Breckland were particularly poor and it's obviously moved on to Norfolk. I think our job as councillors is to escalate it. And, you know, Nick's raised it with officers and he's got the officer's response. I think our job as councillors is to escalate it with the relevant cabinet member and folks at Norfolk County Council. So I would quite like to write them a letter and say, this isn't good enough, frankly, because I completely agree. So I've made myself a little note to do that. We've got a number of issues Norfolk County Council related now, which is taking a huge amount of our staff's time. That's the other issue. You know, so it's not good enough. So I have made a note to do that. So I'm glad you raised that.
Agreed, Mr Chairman, thank you.
David, please.
Just to say, brilliant report. I didn't realise how much was done. Really well done.
Thank you. Terry first, then Ian.
No questions to ask, really two comments. Firstly, Nick, thanks for the call. It's really heartening seeing how much work you do. It's very much appreciated. I'm really pleased to see that you're taking positive outreach steps to go to residents and work with them in terms of Frederick's Wood and elsewhere. I think these are things that really should be highlighted. So give that to the town team for that. The second point is following on from councillor Brindle. As a Breckland councillor, pretty much once a week now, I get an email from, I think it's the leader of Norfolk County Council, telling me how great it is that they're doing the Western Relief Road in Norwich. As I understand it, Norfolk County Council are ploughing tens of millions into this thing for four or five miles of road. Meanwhile, they won't touch our underpasses. It's disgraceful. It really is. And if you're writing a letter, stick my seatbelt up.
Thank you. Ian, please.
Two questions. So the first one was around the small parcels of land, which I think we were going to take on as pocket parks or something. The annual costs of 5,000 or something. I wondered how much that is in comparison to what we're currently paying. So what does that add to the total amount? Do we know properly?
Not for hand, but we can obviously get that information for next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
47,000. What is yours, 47,000?
Okay.
Because of 10%.
Thank you. And then on Frederick's Wood, I also think that sounds good. I guess I'm a bit concerned that we aren't overly enthusiastic in cutting stuff back in Frederick's Wood because it has a good conservation value and people value that wood obviously for the kind of green space it provides too. So I hope there's some kind of balance going on there, which I'm sure there is.
Yeah, one of the many things we're going to look at going forward is obviously the third box is about boxes encouraging a little bit more habitat for the conservation volunteers to include it with. So they'll obviously, you know, put back what we're taking away. Yeah.
Lovely, thank you. I'll just say, yeah, thanks so much for all the work you're doing.
Very welcome.
Stick the book.
Thank you, Ian. Matt?
Well done, Nick. This is the first time I've been to amenities committee. So I've never heard this part before. I think we should be shouting about this more. Is there any reason we can't do this at full council? This presentation part of full council meeting we've said. Because I think anyone who's not on amenities, it's really good to get the whole council there, but also for the public, I think, to not like a swarm to have, but for the people who do come, I think to sit and hear that would be really good rather than just hear us debate and bring points. But I think hearing what exactly what the town is doing, that's a really important thing. And again, like I said, I've never been to amenities, first time I'm here. And I'd love to hear this every for a full council.
Yeah. We are trying to, from a communications point of view, build it into town council social media, the work that the team are doing. It has improved, but we're not there yet. So there needs to be more publicity on social media and the website, which will come. I'm not sure if full council is the right format, but certainly the annual town meeting might be a good idea to do an overview of the year. Because if you add up over, you know, the course of the year, you know, 35 hours of volunteer time undertaking conservation work over the course of the year, that's a significant amount of time. You know, I like quantifying, you know, the number of bins that have been cleaned. We own probably 200 litter bins around the town, 100 benches or whatever. So maybe we can give some thought to the annual town meeting and doing it that way. That might be a good idea. But any suggestions to, you know, promote what the guys are doing? Because, you know, we on amenities get this every single month and we're obviously really pleased with what's going on. Yeah. Noted. Adam?
Yeah, just for Matt's point, really. I know what you're saying about social media and the rest of the town, but as a council, I don't know that. If I'm honest, you know, like just, and I know you wouldn't need to hear it necessarily every full council meeting. You know, like it's different committees that you get, and there's quite a bit on there that's being done positively for the town. Just to support that point, Matt's just made it handy to have a way of, especially as a new councillor, I suppose that would make it.
Yeah. I think the town team report goes out with the minutes for amenities. So it is in the minutes. So if you're not on a particular committee, it's always a good idea just to read the minutes and any appendices to see what other people are, you know, up to. But we need to.
To be fair though, it's hard to read all the minutes.
Yeah, yeah, I get that for the rest of it. It's just like, sometimes it's just like a, I think those bits that were on there, the
average family or friend, they're the sort of things that people ask about, I think.
Yeah.
And they are the sort of things that local councillors, it would benefit to have a knowledge of what's going on. Sorry to confuse yous.
No, no, no. I don't disagree. Those of us that are on amenities, we love it.
And I know you're going to say, you're always welcome to come and sit on every.
You are always welcome to.
The report.
Yeah, you could do. Yeah. We'll take that on board and, you know, I joke slightly, but we're always keen to acknowledge what the councils do. And I think we do some pretty good stuff and we don't shout about it enough. When I say we, Nick and the team, you know, they do amazing work every month and we do need to promote that. So, Terry?
Just a quick one, as it's sort of my bag, as it were. It seems really obvious that these reports on the website, once the website gets sorted, doesn't it? In form, you know, rather than individual little bits of work, you know, latest report from the town team.
Yeah.
I really think it would be positive.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? No, just a couple from me. Castle mound and ramparts, I've spoke about the need to write to Norfolk County Council. I do think it's time that we also write to Historic England.
Yes.
I get a significant amount of complaints about the state of Castle Park at the moment. And if we don't get the consent from them soon, we're going to be into the season where we can't do what we need to do on the site. So they need to get their act together, frankly. So I think I need to escalate that with them. And where we spoke about litter picking, Nick, in the contract that we have with ID Verdi.
Yes.
They're supposed to litter pick Barnham Common.
They are.
And I did notice, obviously this time you reveal the vegetation dying back, the route to Berries Edmonds, there's a lot of exposed litter along there.
Yeah.
How frequently are they required to go and do that?
So the gentleman has been liaising with ID Verdi. He's trying to get the gentleman about once a week at the moment on that area. But I did chase him up about two days ago, just to get an overview. And he's promised me by the end of this week can have some beyond that, again, litter picking.
Okay. I noticed it yesterday. So that'd be good. Okay. We're required to note the report. Are you happy to note the report, committee? Thank you very much. Those of you that want to dash off elsewhere, feel free to dash off elsewhere.
Oh, just this.
I don't hear it.
First Tuesday of the month.
Really in start stuff in this next bit.
I know. I thought it came.
Yeah.
Thank you. To that.
Read that line.
See you later.
Time for the frame or something.
Frame line.
Photo, sorry, can we get?
I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll move on to item 496, review of the management of wildflower meadows. I'll just say a couple of words, Hayes, and then hand over to you if you want to introduce Ian. Last year, we agreed as a council that we would try and create wildflower meadows at free locations in Thetford following our public consultation. This year, we did actually achieve that. It's important that we review that moving forward. We had a little discussion about it last month. Very pleased that Ian Woodward's come along today to talk to us. I used to do some introductions.
Yeah, not a huge amount more than that to say, just that the flower meadows, I think, were a good success and we saw lots of different species. We didn't really know what was going to come up and what was going to happen because we just left them and didn't know them. And it could have been really rubbish, but actually we got lots of different species. And so rather than just kind of copying a standard way of doing things, Ian, who knows the area well, knows about plants and botany, has done a bit of research for us about actually what could be the best way to manage those sites. So he's come to recommend a way to take forward how we manage those areas.
Some pointers across the main. Yeah, so I'm obviously working with Hayes and Ian. And most of my spare time actually is then botanising around the town rather than bird watching. So I'm actually writing a book about Thetford flora, which I'm actually close to finishing, hoping to work on getting published soon. That's me. So what I am not, I should stress, is somebody who has practical experience of wildflower meadow management. So I know a bit about it from talking to other botanists and from what I have read up, particularly over the last two weeks. But I haven't actually been somebody who's gone out and managed meadows and created meadows. And so I ended up here. So I saw the bit by Barnham Cross Common when it had been cut a few weeks ago and wrote to Hazel to say I'd possibly the cutting should have been cleared up a bit more for meadow management. Hazel was off on her holes and one of my colleagues that I copied it to then copied it with Terry. And he got back to me saying that you were planning to do further management and if I understood correctly how and so on. And I then got back to say, yeah, that sounds good, but there are some concerns around that. So that's why I've ended up here. And so I've looked at and the concerns around this particularly. So this is a rough picture. And this is what often gets published in the press as a great wildflower meadow because it looks very, very pretty. And there are some councils that have put these sort of things in along verges and then lauded about it on social media. And in fact, these are all non-native plants. They look great, but they're not very good for biodiversity. And also they're all annual species where it basically only lasts one year and then you need to constantly manage it to get it looking like that again. And it's nice to see as lots of people nodding, so clearly people around here know that already. And so from, yeah, I think the next one is more, that's a very good meadow actually. But and then the one, so that's even got orchids and things in. And then the one after that, I think is more what you might often expect. Next photo.
The pressure, Alan.
We've broken it though. I don't understand. What else is that?
Oh, these are just things I've gathered on the internet. So they're not around.
That's excellent.
Yeah, yeah, that's all the, if you have to fight it off, I think I thought it was okay to show here. I'm not publishing them anywhere. Yeah, so it's more like what you would expect a meadow to be like. So it's sort of 50, 60% grass and various pictures, various flowers coming up amongst it. That's just the way verg, we're written on there. Yeah, so that's a verg that looks particularly good. With different colours and those and sort of things that you would kind of probably expect in Thetford rather than the really colourful ones. And obviously unfortunately, when people see pictures like those in the bright ones, they kind of expect that and think, oh, if you're doing a wildflower meadow, that's what you're going to get. So I mean, the recommendations that I've found and from what I'm my knowledge from talking to other people is first of all, you should leave places and see what comes up, which is great because that's what you've done. And then you should start thinking about what soil is like and thinking about what plants would be or what plant mixes would be appropriate to try putting into places. And whether they should be annual plants or perennials, which are obviously a bit of, basically survive in the long term, whereas the annual plants just seed one year and then they need to seed every year in order to persist. basically survive in the long term, whereas the annual plants just seed one year and then they need to seed every year in order to persevere. So those are the sort of things you should think about. And also whether you can get locally, local seeds, which is a more difficult one, because usually when you get seed mixes, they're kind of UK seed mixes rather than anything else. And, you know, those things like soil, I have no idea how you can test those out. I've got some ideas, but obviously this being the wrecks, quite often the soil is going to be fairly low nutrient. And it's going to be, you're going to want to sustain plants which don't like low nutrients. And again, that could be a problem with the public because it means that you're going to get meadows that aren't looking all that great and lush. And they're going to have, be relatively bare and less growth. And the other problem with that is that because these areas have been managed quite a lot over the last however many years, they're very active cutting areas. And cutting the grass constantly adds nutrients and they become much more nutrient loaded. And therefore it favours the grassies growing more. And that's where we're cutting the grass and then moving it and trying to do things over several years, rather than all at once, is what is kind of needed. And again, that's where it becomes harder with the public because it starts to look messy. So anyway, I've gone on too much about that. So a little bit about each of the sites. And that's, that is, if I've got the right place, that's Springfield. And that's the, oh, here we go, jump back to Springfield.
School plane, school plane.
School, Schofield. Yeah, sorry. I didn't know that, but I was just, yeah, getting it wrong. So that's probably the easiest one because it looks, it looks, there wasn't too much there certainly in twenty twenty one when I was doing my surveys. It looks like a standard meadow. It's right in the middle of town. It has actually got, where those two crosses were, I found corncup and cornflower, which are actually parts of what was undoubtedly a wildflower mix that was either sown officially or that somebody has sown unofficially there. And they did survive from at least twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three, the annuals. So that's interesting. But that's the sort of area where obviously it's potentially checking with somebody what the soil was like. I think the idea of haring and doing some sowing would work. It will be a good option because there's not much there at all. And it's, you know, find somebody who knows what, if you can, if not, I can try and find somebody or advise can suggest a good wildflower mix that's local for the area for that one. That's the easier one. The next one, lady gentle meadows. So this one is slightly more tricky, similar to Schofield. I've not seen that much of particular interest in there. With one exception, which is at the very top there next to the, where the bit by the set comes out. I have found what would appear to be creeping marshwood, which is a species, probably somebody will know about it, not necessarily everybody. It's a species that is at Nuns Bridges. And when Nuns Bridges flooded two years ago, it actually got moved down to Priory Meadows. Seeds must have got picked up on flooding and taken down there. So in twenty twenty one, I actually saw something I was wondering about there, like it's the same year after the flooding. And I decided it wasn't anything interesting. And then I saw it again last summer. And I still haven't confirmed that it's definitely the marshwood, but it's potentially up in that corner. So that would be something that's already there. That is interesting to think about whether it can be left alone on Priory Meadows. That's obviously Breckland managed, but it works okay with just mowing the area where it is and then just leaving it mown for a month or two when they set some flower. So that's the possibility of that top, that corner there. The rest of it, again, I think it could, you could think about doing some sowing there. What, oh, that is a marshwood. So I think that's probably the Priory Meadows or Nuns Bridges. Yes, the rest of lady gentle meadow, I think you could also do some sowing. I think you're going to need to be a bit more careful about what you do there because obviously that is right in the middle of the rivers that floods.
Right.
And therefore you're going to have to, you're going to be thinking about a different mix of plants. And it's, you know, depending how often it's going to flood in the future, that's possibly a bit more like sort of Ford Meadow as an area, if you can leave it as a meadow area. So that is slightly more, and again, something to try and find somebody to talk to about it. And if not, I can try and do my best. And then the final one, the more difficult one. So this is the one, this is obviously right next to Barnham Cross Common. And this is, I think, technically part of the common. And this is the area where I have seen this year, there was quite a lot of interest the next couple of slurs, I think. So that's it, looking wonderful in, I think later April on May with common stalk spill. Looking really pink. I haven't got photos later in the season, but it looks yellow and had various flowers and had some of the Breckland specialties, ber medic and tarragon mustard on it. And that is wild clary, which is at one end of it, which is a great map as well. So there's quite a lot of interest there. So I'm going back to the map. In terms of, I would like to kind of see that probably left to see how it can fare and possibly trying to do a little bit of selective plant introduction. Initially left, I think, as with all of these areas, the problem is people moaning about it being left and it looking messy. So you need to think about ways of making it obvious it is managed. And one obvious thing that you can do, there were two desire lines that appeared where those yellow lines are up. And so that's where you come out of the gate on the common. And there were desire lines that came across the meadow. And so things you want to potentially think about are deep cutting paths, particularly on those lines, but possibly also another one somewhere so that it is clear that it's being managed. Obviously the signage, I'm not too keen on calling them weeds, weeds for bees, because weeds already immediately promotes a negative kind of connotation. But definitely the signage is important to keep people aware of it. And, you know, things like telling people about what's there, which obviously I can help with. And I'm a big Breckland floral group, so I can help with. In terms of future ideas, I mean, one thing I would love to do, there are some of the Breckland specialties all over Bedford on road verges and things which I survey from Breckland floral group. Someone on, I think it's at the council land and someone at South Main Street has got particularly good species, which I think is on Norfolk council area. But on the Brecklands, on the Barnham Cross Common, there are a whole load of species that have been lost from the common. And I would love to, you know, to try and have somewhere where, you know, Breck is actually one of three or four botanical, well, the three or four most botanicaly important areas in the country. And I would love to be able to publicise that to the wider public and get people in for it. And also let the residents know about it. So I don't think anybody, or very few people actually realise that. And so, you know, it would be lovely to, not necessarily here, but somewhere, be able to possibly reintroduce some of the other species that have been lost. And then have them somewhere where people can actually go and look at them. That would be potentially controversial because a lot of botanists don't like doing that because you then can't tell which ones are native and which ones aren't. And they have different statuses. But for some of the things that have been lost from Barnham Cross Common, they haven't been seen for twenty, thirty, forty years. Kind of, it would be nice to see if we can potentially do something like that. If there is a list to do it and support from potentially Breckland floral group and others. Obviously you mentioned sort of talks and things and open days and events. And certainly I would love to support some of those. And I would hope that we would be able to get really, so Breckland floral group is is created and managed by Park Plant, sorry, Plant Life. It's a park life, I wish it was, some, so Plant Life. So I would like to see, I mean, part of their remit is like the LSPB, getting to get people to know about plants. So it would be lovely to see, but I don't know. So many other pictures I've got there. I've got, there should be a, there's one thing I've forgotten actually, so. That's the one. So that's the one thing that we could do potentially this year. So yellow rattlesnake, you may be aware of, is a plant that is a parasite, a hemiparasite of grasses. And that could be something that we can potentially just sow on the Barnham Cross Common bit this year and see if it cuts down the grasses a bit. And what it does, you know, that's something I've tweeted, which I think is something that it's the person who wrote it is happy to share and has put the appropriate license on it. So I can find that again, or I can forward this copy to people if you want to interested in looking at it. But it's a plant that basically helps promote meadows by reducing the grass. That's one thing you can think about. And the other, the other photos, I don't know if you want to go. Yeah, so that's one of the special Breckland ones, maiden pink, which obviously looks nice. So that'd be a nice one. The next one, so that's sand catchfly, which is the one that's up at Main Street. And again, that looks quite interesting and it's tiny though, so it's not, quite a lot of Breckland plants are tiny. That is Spanish catchfly, which has disappeared from the common about forty years ago. And that is perennial lard, which has actually been reintroduced down on the southern end of the common. So these are all special Breckland species that would be lovely to think about. But obviously we can also think about other species as well, which would be less controversial potentially to introduce initially. But I would, you know, suggest, I've already said that I will be looking at Ford Meadow this year. But so I was just possibly leaving that and doing some proper surveys on, and maybe doing yellow rattlesnake, the other possibility is scraping off, which has been a little area somewhere on that perch to see if anything comes up, those sort of things. So I've kept you, I've taken up enough of your time now. Obviously any questions, I know, leave it to debate.
Yeah. That's brilliant. Thank you ever so much for that, Ian. I follow you on Twitter, by the way. So I see lots of your photos that you spot around. No, I've seen some last year. Does anyone have any questions to start off with? From my own point of view, I made quite a few notes there and I saw you scribbling down, Nick. And I kind of feel like we need a wildflower meadow action plan.
Yeah.
And I wonder if you might be able to, you know, liaise with Ian and help something together. I'm, funny enough, I have seen some signage that is similar but doesn't refer to weeds. And I was thinking actually it was more, it's obviously things have obviously evolved on because these signs are quite new for councils. So that's an easy one because we can get that sorted.
It is absolutely, the importance is bringing because I know these sort of things create lots of complaints. And unfortunately, you've probably got just as many people thinking, oh, that's great, but they don't write in.
Yeah. We did a consultation on reducing our mowing and it was our most responded to consultation ever. We had about four hundred responses. A third wanted you to cut everything to an inch of its life. A third wanted you to cut nothing ever, what's them. And then a third in the middle. So, you know, we're damned if we do, damned if we don't. But what we eventually decided to do is all our plots of land, two or three of them, as a bit of a test really, would be left over. And yes, there have been people that have complained this year about it being uncut, in their view. But actually, I've certainly had a lot of people say how wonderful it was as well. So I hope we'll progress over time and have more areas. But it's that education message. So I think there's a, I'd be quite keen for an action plan to develop this idea of information panels and actually have some pictures and some narrative about what people are looking at because, you know, we don't have the knowledge still.
The Walgreens commission are looking heavily into this across the globe because they're trying to get more sustainable than they are now. And they're having a lot of trouble with wildflower meadows of every kind in every location because exactly about. And one of the things they've come up with is doing information boards to say, come on, Walgreens are, you know, trying to be more sustainable, wild meadows. But they have a specific piece to the area and what they're looking at is using QR codes, several of them. So it would say creeping marshwood QR code. And then people can go on that. And if that's already on our website, it will take the link straight to that. And it gives you the full history because otherwise what you end up with is these kind of huge boards that cost a fortune to tell you about exactly what's there. And you can update them as you go along. And then you can also add in the species that they're attracting or that kind of thing. So they can grow quite quickly with those boards.
Yeah.
But yeah.
We've got something down on my relays like that. I don't have a smartphone. I'm stuck in dark ages for choice. So I've never actually used it. Have you tried using this thing down the line?
You tried it, yeah.
Yeah. Slightly different to that, but.
Yeah.
But similar sort of idea.
There is a section on the new website for open spaces. So I quite like the idea of actually having a QR code that takes you to that. You're stood at this location, it takes you to that specific page, this is what you're looking at.
Because as you said, there'll be different plants at different locations.
Yeah, that's interesting. Yeah. So there's a couple of suggestions for some specific interventions. We might just want to build that into the plan. And pathway cutting, when we originally agreed to reduce the mowing, we wanted pathways to be cut through, but I don't think it ever happened. So I was pleased you mentioned that because I think, you know, it's a no brainer that we need to do that.
Most important thing. Making it, making it rock managed.
Yeah. And the other thing, just to add to your notes there, Nick. The, these particular locations, although the land is owned by the town council, it's cut by Serco under the, you know, the big contract. So we don't have as much direct control. But there was an agreement that the reduced mowing would result in enhanced litter picking. Now, I don't think there was any litter picking on the wildflower meadows at all this year because when they cut it, you know, the stuff got caught in the weeds and they cut it. So when we come to write the action plan, we need to make sure that there's litter picking and monitoring going on.
There was a couple of social media pictures of cans in the middle of uncut grass going, wildflowers are going well then, kind of thing. So it just, it ruins everything.
Yeah.
Or not picking.
Okay. If we leave you, Nick, to do the draft and liaise with Ian.
Yeah.
Possibly liaise with Hazel as well, because obviously Hazel's got the link there. But yeah, I think, you know, actually we've made a start and we want to, you know, continue to improve on what we've done.
It was great to think of the start. It was mainly, especially after the failed start before you had that consultation.
Yeah, absolutely. The Berry Road St Barnum was close one, was, I was really pleased with that every time I went past it.
One question, I didn't quite catch whether we covered it. So that bit at Nuns Bridges, a triangle, as I call it, where we built the berm up.
Yeah, we haven't, I didn't say anything about that one.
No, well, we, it's one of those things that we put a lot of effort into, but I'm never quite sure whether it's worked because it's just a height where you can't see what's in it. You know, it's almost like having a small swimming pool there. I don't know whether that's been as.
I can comment on that if you like, because that is one of my sights that I survey for the Breckland floral group. So in terms of the numbers of marshwood have gone right down. And that is partly because it's basically become overgrown and partly because that particular species needs occasional flooding. But that, in order for the marshwood to carry on, it probably does need more management and larger area scrapes on a rotational basis. So we did, we had, I had a meeting with the people from Plant Life and a few other people down there. And we kind of decided we'd do a wait and see what happened. I think we waited and seen that it has gone down. So now we need to think about putting an actual more, more. I mean, around the side, obviously, it is, there is a lot, must be a lot of nutrients there because it's getting into all the nettles and things that. So I don't know what the best way is. And maybe somewhere I can try and look up and try and find some of the rest.
Yeah.
So I don't know what the best ways and I want to know as well. Um, because that is, and, and like you say, that, that means you basically don't see it.
Hmm.
And not that the marsh foot itself looks particularly, especially if you go outside.
Fix its name.
So I just get the optimism to come and look at it. I know that because I see them there occasionally. I could go and chuck when I do see them.
And any other questions for Ian while he's here? No, so you're happy we do this sort of action plan and take it from there? Thank you ever so much for your time, Ian. Really appreciate your knowledge.
No, thank you.
Make sure you get your USB from Alan or your pin chip.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, folks. We'll move on to four nine seven, which is the burial administrators report. The report was circulated. Anything you want to add to the report, Nick? For me, no. No, any questions on the report? People are still dying.
Yeah. My, my only comment is it does still feel we're stuck in a system that we haven't worked our way out getting out of yet. And I'd like very much at some point.
We, we had that conversation in our pre-meeting and it's a sort of capacity issue. There's quite a bit of work to be done.
Yeah.
So the team are aware of that and there will be a number of changes come through at some point and.
Okay, four nine eight preliminary financial report for amenities to receive and discuss the preliminary report for the month ended the thirtieth of November. Anything, Alan, you wanted to add to the report?
I think it's two things. The one is that the, uh, full of payments already actually published and sent us some information of what they've actually been paying us and what we do. So that'll actually be by us will give us a chance to kind of reset that because we've been over budgeting it. Information for a while. Uh, the other thing is trees, uh, that last meeting I said we were doing very well. And then I forgot to, to include the chief surveying costs. We only looked at what the following cost from the chief survey was. So that's likely to be exceeded by about six thousand pounds. They have got savings in other areas, but that was just a little bit of, of, of a little aside from my side. Apologies. And then.
Uh, just, just on that, I was pulling on from the point here, I remember who it was, um, about Freddie's Wood. I, I'm really pleased with the work we're doing as a council to, um, proactively manage our assets. You know, we, you can't have a go at North County Council and we're not put our own housing order. Get the point about not cutting them back, uh, too much, but actually, um, we own a lot of trees and we need to proactively manage them. So although I hear the point that we're, we've spent quite a bit, I'm not concerned.
But otherwise it's, um, our net result is slightly better than we forecast at this time of year. So it's nothing to be seen better.
Okay. Any questions on finances? Nope. Uh, over the page, the cemetery financial report. Anything to add?
Maybe make sure that we put all our income in the right period and it makes, uh, explaining this report a lot easier because we, uh, our income is bold and is up to date in terms of, um, we are below budget, but I think that's just going to be a particular trend possibly because people are moving towards, uh, cremations while the, the full period.
Chris. I have another question on the cemetery maintenance. I've had some comments from residents who's probably backed onto a cemetery, the fact that the age is about to cut down.
Yes, it's a work in progress. We've had the flail on site and they've done as much mechanical as they can. And then they're going to follow up with the hand cutting going around the site. So it will be done in due course. Yeah.
Please don't talk to them.
Uh, no further questions. Uh, five hundred update on the preparation of the amenities budget for next year. Uh, I think this is the last time we look at this before it goes to finance and personnel for adoption.
You have one more meeting.
Oh, okay.
January meetings.
Oh, yeah, we do. Is there anything of note, Alan, that's changed from the last time we've looked at it?
Well, I've noticed I've incorporated the recommendations that were made at the last time. Uh, our roster reports arrived yesterday, uh, and especially derived today, I had the courage to open it. So either we've got some major playbox appears, playbox have been the bane of our life.
Yeah.
Uh, I think what Nick has done, and I just wanted to raise this, is he's actually gone out and found some alternative suppliers. So there's a competitive process on everything we do, uh, because we spent a fortune, you know, we see it all for two thousand pounds just to change a gate, uh, that hurts. So we are, we, you know, uh, we found another contact in Norwich. Um, and we're just making sure that every time we have a job that has to be done, we are getting some competitive quotes. Uh, otherwise it's just going to end up spending more and more.
Yeah. Any questions on the draft budget? No. So we'll go, it'll be debated at December, finance and personnel. And then there'll be a recommendation to a special council meeting in the second week of January, the trajectory.
Can I ask a question on budgets in general? So when I look at these in isolation, I get it. Uh, but when I put them all together, I don't. And this may be my, a bit of capacity here. Um, one of the ones that, that I don't quite understand is reserves. And the reason I don't understand it is because so much goes in and out of reserves. Am I right in thinking that reserves supports us financially in any way?
Yep.
I think really what, what reserves are, reserves are our savings. Yeah. So what we do is we fund all our capital from reserves.
Yes.
And we contribute back to the reserves. So for example, when we did this year's reserves, we use that to have eviction. I'll go back to twenty twenty, two, twenty-three, we had evictions to pay for. We didn't have enough in our savings to come to do that. So we chopped that up, our pay parks, we knew we, we had to invest more money in. Our property maintenance we do. So what we do every year is we try and, it's set aside as much as possible in our reserves. And we use that to fund those non-recurring expenses. Uh, for example, if we redevelop a pay park, we would ideally, you know, lift the capital, it won't be funded from the, it won't be funding operation expenditure. And it's to get that distinction between what you do as projects, not recurring, uh, which we do for reserves and recurring, which we try to do for revenue.
So I'm quite happy that, you know, generally we try and, if we spend in one area, overspend in one area, we try and see if we can make savings in others.
Within the revenue.
Yeah, so I, I get that one. Um, my worry was when I looked then at the reserves, year on year, we, we are depleting the reserves. And our current rate in five years, we won't have any at all if we carry on losing reserve money as we do. Because we need, I put it at, uh, two hundred and eighty grand a year that we generally saw require. And I, I wonder what the, I guess I'm wondering what the, what the problem would be if we did lose that. And in the back of my mind is all these sort of Birmingham councils who go to the wall and, and that kind of thing. Because I'm all for spending money well and using it. But, but in the, there's this nagging thing at the back of my head going, are we just shipping this and going to lose it all?
Alan might better correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand it, we don't use our reserves at all to fund our revenue budget. So we spend what we get in each year. We use reserves for projects.
Right.
So yes, on the current trajectory, we've been quite spend happy as a council the last few years on projects. Guildhall, Carnegie, play areas, all sorts of things. Um, and we need to be mindful of that, that actually those reserves can only be used once. But we're not like other councils, those bigger councils, that need to use their reserves to fund their revenue costs. Ours are what reserves are supposed to be, which is for project interventions, not to fund core services. Is that a fair assessment?
Because we've got, we've got one line in there which is restricted, uh, restricted use reserve, which never gets touched. So that's, that's always kind of sacrosanct. But then we've got other ones such as, uh, election cost reserve, which I, I see that's a statutory requirement for us.
No, um, we, many, well, not many, a few years ago, we didn't have to pay that. Breckland paid for the parish council election expenses. They don't legally have to, which is why they now charge parishes for their election costs.
Right.
So what we do as a council is every, we put money into the reserve every year rather than waiting for the four years and then paying it all in one go. So we consciously build it up. So it's not a big hit in that fourth year.
So I'll ask you, sorry, I get, it starts that when we approved the, uh, budget for this financial year.
Yeah.
One of the things was that we had to set aside twenty thousand pounds in the election reserve.
Yeah.
Sure that we could afford to pay this year's elections. And this year we're setting aside five thousand pounds for the next four years so that we can pay those, uh, the elections in four years' time.
Yeah, okay. Because over three years, we went from twenty-three to four.
Yeah.
And I thought, but if it's being topped up by four every year.
Yeah. The, the only fly in the ointment with that is by-elections. So in the last four-year council term, we did have a number of by-elections. So those costs, I think, were charged to that reserve. So it wasn't a huge cost, but it did deplete it from our trajectory, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, right, okay. Now, you, you've answered questions there. I just, I've got this thing that I think I understand each budget and then I go, but what about the reserves? Because it leaves the link.
Yeah. A, a number of councillors have said to me that they're still struggling to understand budgets. I think at some point, some training around local council finance would be really useful for councillors because it is a bit of a, a dark art. And we all want to improve our knowledge that, you know, that's fine. But the, the point about reserves is, you know, when I first joined the council, I think we had about half a million in reserves, you know? And they have grown, but it, the, the point is, and David Blackburn makes this point all the time, what are the reserves for? That, that's the important question. And, you know, are they sufficient?
Well, yeah, the roof's falling down, I suppose, but.
I was thinking for the rainy, rainy day, but then when the rainy day comes, we never use them. But that's just my opinion.
I, I always sort of kind of assumed that they, you know, it's easier to look at outside budget and I always assumed that was our building society where we chuck stuff in for a rainy day. And this is our reasonable sort of.
Hmm. Lots of ways of looking at it. Uh, yeah, and I had, I had a hand up.
I had a couple more budget questions, well, mate. So the first one was on, um, the open spaces maintenance. I think it's under vegetation management. So this year we're budgeting nearly fifty K on other vegetation management and next year twenty K. Is that because we've spent a lot this year on regular pulling or whatever it was we did?
Um, I think it's, is that right? The other bit, um, no, it's, it's really what, we've spent a lot of money on mechanical cutting.
Yeah.
And so all the work that Nick is doing on the, on the graziers.
Yeah.
This is why it's so fundamental and why he's spending so much time on it, is because if we continue, uh, um, mechanical cutting, we, the costs are horrendous. I mean, you, you have to sit down and you, when you get a quote.
Yeah.
Uh, that's really one of those.
Okay, great, thank you. And then toilets have gone from seven hundred pounds to thirty-seven thousand pounds. And then we're forecasting twelve thousand pounds next year. Why is it, why, why is that variation so big?
Bringing it back in house.
Okay.
The decision was taken at a meeting, this committee.
Lovely, thank you.
And that's the full cost, including contractors. The, the cost is still there. It's just shown somewhere else. That twelve grand is probably the consumables and.
And the servicing, obviously, uh, all the equipment's in it. That's probably.
And then a penny is not what it was.
And, and again, you know, whether it's twenty-six or twelve or whatever, that's a whole new cost for the council. I mean, you know, years ago, we didn't provide toilets. It was done by Breckland councils. That's another cost that we've, um, taken on the same with Castle Park. We didn't used to have Castle Park and we agreed to take it on. It's cost us pretty penny ever since. So, you know, our budget's gone up significantly. Right, uh, decision required to identify changes required in the budget to be taken. Uh, everybody happy to note the draft budget as such? Thank you very much. Some more grants. Uh, we've got three grants to consider which have been circulated. If you could just introduce those, Alan, and I'm going to nip to the nill.
Terms of this grant that I put into the, the, the pack of documents, it's a bit of Methodist church. Uh, about eighty months ago, gave a grant to start up a lunch club, um, in churn, you know, for the elderly and lonely. Um, and this grant is again an extension of that. Uh, they want to do more advertising. They want to do, um, um, at times provide transport and they need more equipment because it's actually been quite difficult. So the grant that they put in is really just to expand what they've got, um, um, and take it forward. So it's a non-profit thing. It's under the whole government structure of the grants underneath the, uh, East Anglia Methodist Church. So all the, all the government structures and everything else that are in place. So from our perspective, from a officer's perspective in terms of assessing compliance with the actual conditions of the grant, we are satisfied that they actually have complied. Second one, uh, what we can come back to is the Thetford Rugby Club. And basically they're required by the Rugby Football Union to, to, uh, it should ensure that all the support that they had to purchase, they were lost, are D V S certified and, and properly trained. What they've done is approached us, asked us for, um, assistance to actually do undertake that training and, and get those D V S, uh, tenured. Uh, again, they have complied. They, 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 uh, just donated parties to their clients, if I remember correctly. Oh, we're sorry, we do, we just need some, uh, additional information from them. They didn't say that's that, they submitted everything else. And then the third, the third small grant is actually the most difficult one. Because this one, uh, is basically what they're doing is supporting, uh, shoebox. Uh, but in terms of our grant, our, our small grant has to benefit people in Thetford or residents of Thetford. What this is, is actually creating a collection point to actually send shoeboxes, Christmas shoeboxes to other, to, you know, to countries in Africa and other, uh, poor nations. So it actually does not fit in with, within our small grant, uh, program, uh, for that, for that reason. So what they're using this money for is we actually put together shoeboxes to send to, 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 um, families and in the other parts of the world. And as you look at the conditions of our grant, fortunately, it doesn't need that. So it's not an intent, it's just we didn't think of this, these types of things which involves the, the grant program. So this one, from a citizen's perspective, we actually conclude that it doesn't comply with the, with the grant. But those are the three, the three grants. Um, we can maybe just work through each and.
Yes. Uh, any questions before we take a vote?
I think the first two, as you said, they, they do directly affect people in Thetford. And, and I don't think there's any contentious part of those at all. You know, whether it's elderly or younger members.
Yeah.
They both have a good impact.
Okay. I had a question about the rugby one. So obviously I'm a, I'm a rugby fan myself, being Welsh and everything. Is it, is the rugby club within the town boundary?
Yes.
Really?
So if you go, if you go past, um, Thetford Rugby Club, the sign for Thetford is beyond it.
Oh, yeah.
I would, I would suggest probably yes, because we, we have all the stuff with this two mile bottom. And that's considerably part of Thetford, which is sort of on the other side of the road. So my guess, my guess would be yes.
By England.
Okay, so the first one, folks, is the Thetford Methodist Church. Can I have a proposer and a seconder? Proposed by Chris Harvey and sponsored by Hazel. All those in favor? Agreed. Thank you very much. The second one, uh, Thetford Rugby Club, can I have a proposer, Mike Brindle, and a seconder, Mac McDonald? All those in agreement? Agreed. And then the third one. I think for consistency, um, we've done the, the assessment, it doesn't comply with the assessment. There's no point having the assessment if we therefore approve it. Um, I would suggest that the, there is plenty of things that Cloverfield Community Church do that are, uh, but would be compliant with the policy. So I'd suggest we go back to them and say no, but please do apply for something else.
Yeah.
Otherwise we appear with solemnness.
Sorry?
Otherwise we appear solemnous.
Yes. They are a very proactive church and they do lots of good work in the community and I'm sure we can fund something they do. Uh, anything else under small grants? Happy? Um, I just checked the budget and we're about halfway through. So three thousand pounds of the six spent with those two, that will take us to four.
And it's the last one, it's what we.
And there's the last one. Okay. So we still have capacity for at least a few more this financial year. I think those three probably came as a result of the town council newsletter, didn't they? We had a sort of bumper crop. Are there any more waiting in the wings to be assessed?
Uh, not as a, not as a, we haven't, what, what has happened, people submitted in the old system. So we have actually sent, sent it back to the, uh, so there's, there's possibly one more.
Yeah.
We had it sent to them last week. So there are two still coming in.
So there still are a few more. Okay. Uh, moving on, five zero two, finalisation of the parish partnership bid. Uh, this has been debated by amenities and full council. And, but the bid actually has to be submitted tomorrow.
Yep.
Seventh. Thursday, uh, I think Alan wanted you to be aware of the application form before it was submitted, so that everybody is aware. Are there any questions on the report?
Resonance on the street and stuff is going to be the version that's speaking.
Yes.
So there's, there's been some amendments, but the project itself is the same.
Any questions? No. Uh, decision required to approve the parish partnership bid, would you like a proposer and a seconder? I'm happy to propose. Would somebody like to second? Chris Harvey, all agreement? Uh, application to erect a Christmas tree at the cemetery. Consider a request to erect a Christmas tree by a local funeral director at the cemetery. Uh, I think there was some details in your pack. And this happens most years, I mean, it's not the first time this has happened. And, and there's never been any issues in the past that I'm aware of. Um, it is a, actually something residents do appreciate, I've had lots of positive comments about it. Uh, anything you wanted to add, Nick?
No, again, um, thanks goes to Mark Skinner, he does this most years. Um, so he provides a Christmas tree, um, and wooden hearts string. And then people can just go up and place a little message for their loved ones that they've lost recently. Um, for, and, you know, residents in the town, seems very popular, like Terry says, you know, a lot of people do look forward to that coming each year. Where they can place their little messages to their loved ones they've lost. Um, so it is a, you know, well-supported thing. Um, so it's good to see the committee are happy for Mark to be able to do that again this year.
Yep. Everyone happy?
Yep, can we not plant one? It seems a bit daft to keep them, cutting one down, they're going to stick it up in a green, an open space.
They normally put it inside the chapel, don't they?
Normally just in front of the chapel.
Yeah. But I mean, we've got all that land by the, by the car park, it seems a bit.
Get one in a pot, that stunts, it's great, you haven't got an out of people.
Yeah.
We could, uh, give some thought to a potted one, maybe.
Yeah, I think that's.
Good idea. Although they're paying for it, so I'm not too worried.
Fair enough.
No, I'll tell you, we could plant one and then charge them to hire it here. We're on a roll now. Right. Uh, five zero four, so we're moving on from something happening now uh, to something that's not happening till September next year. Uh, this is a BFER, uh, swimming event, um, and we're being asked to give admission. Uh, again, uh, there was some details in the report about that. And obviously it's subject to the usual risk assessment and insurance. Which we know BFER have and do because they regularly use our land for activities. Uh, any questions from anybody about this particular event?
What does BFER say?
Breckland.
Breck, Spenn, Edge Rivers. Um, did, did you approve, um, need a proposer or a second or just?
We do.
Could I have a proposer to approve?
Happy to propose it, if they can swim in that.
Yeah. It's in September as well.
More like oxen.
Uh, Hazel and Mac proposing and seconding? I'm partly saying that so it's on the recording for you.
Yeah.
Because I don't trust that camera down there, you won't see anyone's hand move. Uh, proposing second, all in agreement? Thank you very much.
I think the same thing is, is a free, what?
Oh, yes.
Our new policy, we have to decide whether to charge or not.
Yes.
Matter of confirming the charitable status.
Sorry, you did, you did say that. What was the, um, so there's a difference between the commercial and the charitable rate, is that what the question is? Uh, and what's the difference of those two costs?
That's significant, it would be children's seven five pounds.
Yeah.
Uh, for this event, so someone's making commercial activities and making money out of it.
Yeah.
It would really just matter to review that because, you know, we also incur costs in terms of providing that.
Yeah.
This seems to be, uh, a, a genuine charitable, it's a very short-term event.
Yeah.
Asking for the exclusive rights of our assets.
Yeah, so there's no private profit to be made.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a public good type event and therefore are we happy with the charitable rate? Health and safety matters, to update the committee on any health and safety matters that have arisen since the last meeting.
Anything from yourself, Nick?
Clear, yeah, good.
Oh, I like that, all clear.
Chris, anything you wanted to mention?
Not really.
Not a lot of differences. What committee are they on? No difference. No, um, but if any of you do, uh, so this, um, decision comes about following the full council meeting last week. Um, where health and safety will now appear on all agendas, so if you have any health and safety issues or concerns, it's something that is important that we all take responsibility for and raise if, uh, we are aware of anything. Um, you don't have to wait for the meeting, of course, you can raise. Uh, and Alan, but, uh, this is our opportunity to discuss anything if there were anything, but there's not, which is good news.
Correspondents, to update the committee on any correspondence received, is there any?
This is the Coronation Living Heritage Fund, which the council uh, part of funding they have done and they're offering us to apply for.
Yeah.
Uh, for funding, it's really, so we'll put this on to.
Yeah.
The, it's the orchard, isn't it?
This is a container email about today, yeah.
So we've got between the fifth of December and the fifth of January, expects to make application.
Well, given we won't be meeting before then. Um, on the, so this is the, the funding application that town clerk emailed today. It's quite a tight deadline because it closes on the fifth of January. Are you happy for officers to submit an application on our behalf in the meantime?
Yes.
Yeah.
We, we've got plenty of space to put those trees, should we get?
Christmas tree orchards?
Yes.
No, I mean, we might as well apply, we've got, you know, we do quite a lot of tree planting, so, uh, are you happy with that?
Yeah.
I don't know how complicated it is, but hopefully not too complicated. Just trying to have a look, see how much is. Hundred pound to five thousand pounds.
Quite a. Right.
You've got plenty of dead.
Uh, I know the total pot they've got available, so five thousand pounds is quite generous, so we might want to go for a smaller of a.
So that doesn't include any maintenance or upkeep?
Oh, it says that, yeah, no wall break.
Your own wall break, etc.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Good, uh, action points from previous meetings. I'm just going to highlight the ones that, um, we need to talk about. Uh, the second one there, finalised parish partnership submission, that has been done and it will be submitted, so we can take that one off. Uh, check presentation, uh, I need to do. Sounds progressing. Uh, picking up Max's point, the burial administrator's still reviewing the burial fees and will have that presentation uh, to, uh, in the new year, once that's been collated.
Would you, would you still be interested in, uh, Sue coming along to help? You know, similar to what we had today?
Yeah.
Should I ask her if she'd do it on that meeting?
Will we have the fee information by January?
We will, we've just got to develop recommendations.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, if she's, if she don't mind.
Right.
Uh, we, we've got a number of cemetery issues, so a sort of cemetery-themed amenities meeting would make sense.
Yes, okay, good.
And the January one might be quite good, because I'd imagine there won't be as much town team stuff to talk about in January. I assume you have a Christmas hall.
Hopefully.
Uh, that was done. Still in progress, done. Okay, so could we add to the, uh, action points? Um, to produce a wildflower meadow action plan? Were there any other action points that came out of today's meeting that anyone wants added to the list? Uh, chair to write to Norfolk County Council.
Just on the, uh, on the wildflower bit, there's, there is a danger that we could try and do, or every one of those bits that we've talked about. And perhaps on the, on the action plan, we actually look to consolidate in one or two areas rather than trying to do all of them. Because we could just still leave the others.
Yeah.
And because that's what we've done in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I believe in sort of, um, uh, taking it forward in manageable trunks.
Yeah.
Rather than. And that's why I quite liked even on, uh, Ian's map, it had specific areas, not the whole lot, which I think is much more manageable.
Chair to write to Norfolk County Council and chair to write to English. English Heritage, yeah. Okay. Community engagement to discuss and agree any consultation or media release required. So picking up the points made earlier. I, I don't know what work you've got planned for December, if there's any street furniture cleaning or anything like that going on. But can we get some social media arranged around some of the stuff that the town team's doing?
Yep.
Yeah. Um, I know that, um, communications officers already drafted a press release about the Christmas tree.
Yeah.
So that will go out tomorrow.
Yeah.
Anything else that's on the agenda tonight that people want to promote? Yeah. Well, lastly then, five oh nine, committee officers update, to receive any update from the committee officer. Alan Shapen's head, Nick Shapen's head, thank you very much. That being the last item, meeting closed. Thank you for your contributions this evening for a slightly longer meeting with the other one.
No, it's nothing to do with that.